And of course with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 3-4-80E, South Carolina Code of 1987 as amended, all the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location and agenda of the meeting. Ms. Fore, if you will please share a prayer with us and then we will have the pledge by Mr. Reed.
Let us all bow our heads, please. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for being such a gracious God to all of us. Lord, we thank you for the Dalton County School District, Lord. We thank you for our superintendent. We thank you for the administrative staff, the principals, the teachers and all who make this school district what it is. God, we ask you to bless this meeting, oh God, and we ask you, God, that we come together, God, in prayer and that we can make sound and right decisions at this time. In your name, God, we do ask you, in your holy righteous name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda?
It's on move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Executive session, a motion to move into executive session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion we move into executive session to cover potential matters, recommendations for terminations, hires and transfers and contractual matters.
May I get a second? Any conversation? All in favor? Aye opposed? We'll move into executive session.
Okay, all in favor? I grant this extension. No actions were taken, no votes were taken, and we're gonna move on. We have anybody's students comments? We do not. Okay, moving on to our consent items. We have adult admissions. Can I get a motion to approve our adult admissions?
Madam Chair, I move to the exception recommendation of the administration.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? And then we have our minutes for the board work session, a regular meeting in September, and then the board work session in September. We want to combine those together. Can I get a motion to combine those?
Madam Chair, I make a motion we combine all minutes and all except.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the next Darlington County Board of Education work session is scheduled for Monday, October the 23rd, at 6:00 PM here in the training room at the administrative office building. And our next regular meeting will be November the 13th at 6:00 PM, again, here in the training room. Got budget reports and our federal reports and your questions for today concerning those. No questions, we'll move on, and that brings us to Dr. Newman and our strategic plan focus areas update.
Chair, I ask the members of the board, members of our audience, again, we want to make sure that we keep the strategic plan focus areas at the forefront for each board meeting. Of course, our mission statement is to educate, empower, and prepare all for an ever-changing world. And so I always want to make sure that I start this segment of the board meeting with our mission statement. So, again, just some examples of what's going on with those strategic plan areas. The first is student success. And so, again, our principals are doing a great job of listing the four areas of the strategic plan each month, what they've, some examples that they've had in their schools. I'm just gonna highlight a few, because I have about four pages here. But from student success, Bay Road Elementary had a pep rally with Hartsfield High School, and many of the students attended the game for the first time, and it was really great to have the high school students come over to Bay Road, spend time with them, and inspire them, but also talk to them about what it was like to be a student athlete. I think that's really important from a student success standpoint, that, you know, what does it take to balance being a student athlete with academics? We also had where Darlington High had our We Work Wednesday, which is where every student with a 73 or higher for that week in tests and quizzes gets an extra 30 minutes at lunchtime. And those that don't have that actually have tutoring time, and the teachers are really excited to be able to have the additional tutoring time with the students. Another example is JL Kane is continuing to promote the Dream Box Challenge. We've also launched our Brag Tags to encourage academic growth and character education. So Dr. Bridges, again, some examples of, again, academics and character ed at the same time. Lamar Spalding is completing goal conferences with students, so the students actually share their goals with their parents. And I think that's so great for our elementary students. And, again, where we have Dr. Austin is teaching the kids to be empowering themselves to have the conversation with their parents. We also had Pate Elementary, which is doing individual balloon buck goal for students, promoting individual character, hard work, and kindness, again, school-wide. St. John's has got support for students, social-emotional, with huge turnout for Grandparents' Day. Again, but they're having a chance to talk to their parents and their students about what the social-emotional piece is. And then last I have is where Thornwell School, Casey Kills, has got positive office referrals, where 80 referrals, positive referrals, were given to students during the month of September. They're becoming so popular with the students that students have started giving them to teachers. So they're giving their teachers positive referrals, which I think is, again, a great example of including our students and what that looks like. So that's student success, staff excellence. Hartsfield High had PD that they held on the 29th, and they were able to spend time improving their knowledge of simple discipline in Pick My Kid, which are two new programs we have, the Electronic Hall Pass, Class Tag. Teachers were also able to spend 30 minutes focusing on their wellness and team-building by participating in step aerobics, basketball, walking, putt-putt, or yoga. So, again, focusing on all parts of the teacher there. Also, Hartsfield Middle's science teachers participated in the PD region professional development that we had here at the district office. We actually hosted that for the State Department with teachers from all over this part of the state. We had Lamar High that did a weekly debriefing session for teachers who have been in the field of education less than four years, and the goal is to have meaningful conversations about what they're dealing with, and pair them up with veteran teachers. So focus on that. Mayo has a bucket party where staff participated in a workshop based on the children's book, Have You Filled a Bucket Today? In line with our Orange Frog Happiness Advantage, we are all striving to be bucket fillers, sharing kindness and positive support as a habit and as a staff. So, again, Ms. Lennar, kudos to you and your group for doing that. Again, we've got Southside that did First Friday every month is Bear Buggy. The Bear Buggy comes around with school supplies, snacks, and drinks for all the faculty and staff, and it's brought by the kids. So, community engagement. Carolina had over 230 grandparents and grandfriends on September 8th. The students toured their special visitors around the school. DCVA staff was at the Hartsfield Farmer's Market to highlight what they're doing in engaging families. Darlington Middle had their Second Parent Workshop, Let's Talk Data. So, again, teaching our parents to understand what it looks like for their students and the data that they're coming home with. Hartsfield Middle School collected over 285 items to donate to the United Way. Pate Elementary hosted an SEL Family Night, teaching parents and families the domains of SEL and strategies that they can use with their children at home. Rosenwall hosted a Title I Open House with STEAM Night, focus communication with parent advisory committee, as well as grits for grandparents. I saw grits for grandparents on many of yours for community engagement, which was great. And, again, St. John's had a walking field trip with their 5K group for the Fire Department, Police Department. Resources is the fourth domain, the fourth goal area that we're working on. And, again, Carolina used grant funds to purchase SEL materials for their group, used funds to purchase math and reading resources, was Bay Road. EDI Training, we've got four of our schools that are doing explicit direct instruction training that they're doing professional development for with their staff. I think our high schools are excited about new TI calculators that we've ordered and batteries, because they take a lot of batteries, they're expensive, y'all have told me. And then the part-time assistants are really helping with teachers to pull small groups. That was from Pate. And, again, Title I funds at Thornwell were used to purchase supplies and snacks for books with besties. So, again, those are the four goal areas, but examples of what's going on across the district. I think it's just important for everybody to hear, and, again, I got four pages of it, so there's a lot more here, but I think it's good for everybody in this room to hear that. Principals, again, I appreciate not only you cataloging, but more importantly, that you are implementing these in your schools, and it's making a difference for your students and your staff and your families and the community that you serve, and so we appreciate that. That's the update for the strategic plan.
Okay. All right, Dr. Newman, then we'll roll right on into your state of the district.
Okay.
With a year-end review.
See if I can get the computer fired up here.
You using this one or?
Use this one.
Okay.
I'll make sure that y'all can see this. Okay, well, it's October 9th, and it's, I wish I didn't have to wait till October 9th to talk about our year-end review, but as you all know, we don't get our test scores. We're not able to talk about our test scores until at least September. And actually, our report card ratings, which will be officially out in the public as of midnight tonight. So this group actually gets a chance to see and hear, and you get a chance to see and hear, about our ratings before midnight tonight. And since we don't have any media with us present, I think we'll be okay, and we won't have anything out to the public too soon. Again, a reminder of what our 2022-23 district goals were. Again, we started with, at the board retreat back in 2022, about what was important and what was top of mind for the board, and then that rolled into, of course, my group, and then that rolled into principals and then the schools. And so, safety and security, mental health supports, parent guardian engagement, and student achievement. And, again, I think you see where some of these are continued to be incorporated in our new goals that we have this year, but let's talk about what that looked like for this past year. Safety and security, we had new campus security positions approved at the high and middle school. Again, we approved SROs, but our law enforcement agencies have not been able to provide us with the additional SROs at Darlington High and Hartsfield High. We're still waiting for that. But we were able to add on some extra help in lieu of the SROs to help that stopgap at this point in time. Of course, we implemented the weapons detectors last year at all high schools and middle schools. We're refining those schedules to where they're being utilized more often than buildings. We also have them at the football games and basketball games. If you all have been to a football game this year, you've probably seen that it's a pretty well-run machine at this point in time, working everybody through those, and we've not had a lot of negative from our parents. They're pretty thankful that we have those, not only in our buildings but at the games, that they're going to walk through drills by law enforcement on all of our campuses, again, to tell us about the blind spots and help us improve on where we can have more security. Additional card access locations, as we've gone through the process of putting card access everywhere, identifying more spots. Reunification drills, I know the board has been updated on this, where we have taken all of the students at one school and transported them to another location to mimic an emergency drill where they would be picked up and taken by their parents. So, again, we want to practice, 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 because when it's time for the real one, we want to be prepared. We had our countywide task force formulated in March of this past year in spring, and we actually had the first meeting for the countywide safety and security committee that was somebody from each entity from around the district. Our district was represented by Mr. Govan and Ms. Gore, myself. The sheriff and other law enforcement agencies were also represented. We only had one other task force member, our person from Lamar actually was at that meeting with us. But we did have 40-plus students and parents and guardians, and coaches and local pastors also participated in that with us, so a lot of good came out of the meeting. We decided at that meeting that we would definitely do something in the fall with the Sheriff's Department and work through that, and, of course, when we have a chance to talk to our community entities, we hope they'll participate, have a little bit better participation than what we got last year for that. Mental health supports, we hired Dr. McCall in January as the mental health coordinator. We added extra mental health counselors from PD Mental Health. We added extra mental health services from Stewart Behavioral Health for a couple more of our buildings. We also were exploring more health services from another entity called SSG. We're looking at piloting at Darlington Middle School. So we're trying to get in more mental health counseling in all of our buildings. School committees and district committees established in identifying students with the needs at the school level, but also being aware at the district level some of the more difficult situations that our principals are facing. Suicide protocols put in place for all buildings. We were not real consistent across the grade levels on how we were handling, you know, suicide attempts. And in our schools, and our principals know this, but I think we finally have a much more consistent way of dealing with when a student says they're gonna harm themselves, and what is the protocol in place, and who's responsible for that. So we're really glad to get that more streamlined and consistent. New telehealth option that we started with GAGL, that we learned about this service through, actually, Greenville County Schools, where students and their guardians can actually access day or night, instead of just being confined to a daytime appointment. A lot of times, we make recommendations for students to have mental health counseling, but we can never get them to the counseling appointment. We can't get anybody to take them there. So this is actually a way for them to get that support with a telehealth option. We're also exploring several grants for more funding. One of the grants that we received is the PACE Grant, where Darlington Middle School and Hartsfield Middle School female students, it's targeted counseling for the identified participants. Again, that's going through the school counselors as well as the building itself, but that is a grant-funded counseling position that is working with those students, and we continue to look for more funding for that. Parent guardian involvement, as our principals know, we all had monthly activities that were part of the evaluation process. How are we gonna get more parent guardian involvement? How are we gonna try to reach out more? Just a few examples, again, Lamar High had their parent university night, Southside had their breakfast workshop, Darlington Middle School had a big spring festival with a lot of community participation, Lamar Spalding had family game night, North Hartsfield had a big Christmas program. And, again, there were examples every month where our schools were very focused on trying to reach out and have more participation. Online registration was fully implemented last year. Schools actually did a really good job earlier getting folks involved with the registration, getting them into the buildings. Our transportation department actually sent buses out into the community. Our transportation department actually sent buses out into the community with iPads and bus drivers, and sat in locations, invited people to come there to get registered at the bus with them. So just trying to think outside the box, and transportation was trying to find a way to connect with our parents and our community more, and I thought that was a great idea with Tony Thomas and his group. We had over 80% of our students that were registered by June 30th, which was a great number to see, and I think everybody is used to online registration. Now, we're still trying to work out some tweaks on getting some of the forms that we can get online. The more forms we can get versus having people bring them into the buildings, I think our principals would be glad to see that happen, too. So we're working on that. We had two grants that were implemented for three- and four-year-olds, which included 25 parents, guardians in each attendance area that we did this past year. Then we also had a new program for parents of two- and three-year-olds, which was three 90-minute sessions, one in January, one in March, and one in May, and we had a ton of supplies for those families that participated. Again, trying to help them help their children be prepared to come to us. You know, in the data that I have looked at over and over, you know, we're going to talk about our test scores in a second, but that's for the kids that we have in front of us. When it talks about how children are prepared to come to school, like the KRA as a kindergarten student, it's incredible to see the amount of students that aren't prepared when they get to us, right? And so, we're starting behind, trying to catch kids up, that are so far behind because they've had no family input on how to prepare them, they have nobody reading to them at home, they have nobody telling them about how to count to 10, or colors, or anything. And so, these are initiatives that we're trying to get more parents, give them more help and more guidance and coaching on how to help their children be ready when they get to us, because the more ready they are when they get to us, the better they're going to do with us. Our arms frog random act of kindness day was held on April 22nd last year. And the weather, can we say it was a little difficult in the morning? There were some pretty severe thunderstorms that rolled through the area, but everybody stayed true to what they were working on, and the weather cleared up for us. North Hartsfield had care boxes for Carolina Pines and Care South. Carolina Elementary distributed care bags across the community. Dawington High was at Sonic giving out free slushes, or slushies, is it a slushy or a slush?
It's a slushy.
Slushy. I call them frozen drinks, and I had to make sure to correct that, so.
It was specifically the Falcon slushy.
That's right. I knew it was purple. Mayo had a breakfast for the community members, I thought that was awesome, but they had the griddle out there and everything, made the pancakes, and just inviting folks to come hang out with them. St. John's, I thought was wonderful, you held lunch for first responders, and you were worried about, number one, would anybody show, but number two, even with the weather, you had a great turnout with people showing up. So I thought it was great to have that. And again, our community is actually expecting the Random Act of Kindness event now, because they're all wanting to participate, and they all talk about how great it is to see our students that are, you know, over and over, they said, these students came by, these young kids came by, and they gave us stuff for no reason. And, you know, what is going on in our schools for doing that? And we're trying to demonstrate character ed, we're trying to demonstrate, you know, the act of giving. All right, academic achievement, just some of the initiatives. Again, our after-school and summer school programs were offered to all of our students, not just those that were failing, and so we wanted to make sure to capture as many students as we could. Our learning rounds that we started, we actually initiated in more content areas and grade areas across the district, and this is where teachers and administrators visited other schools to gain knowledge of best practices and collaboration. It's continuing this year as well with more content areas and more grades. Small group instruction, again, we have professional development for that across the district. That's becoming more and more prevalent throughout the district as we work on small groups to help students like and like. Year-long professional development for principals, we held monthly. Last year, we had leadership skills, goal setting, root cause analysis, cognitive coaching were some topics that we worked on. This year, of course, we had the Dr. Tammy Palowski Center for Excellence PD that we're working on. And not only does she work with our schools and our teachers, but she works with our principals each month first, before anybody else gets it. District-wide PD held a march for content and grade levels led by teachers, again, best practices, what's working, who's doing something good, what are your scores? How are you getting scores like you're getting, and how can we take some of your best practices back to our schools and my classroom? All right, good stuff. Academic achievement. So this is the new report card ratings that will be public as of midnight tonight. And what I've got is a list of where we were last year and where we are this year. So with excellent schools, last year we had three, this year we have four. With good schools, last year we had two, this year we have four. With average schools, we have one less, because we got more good and excellent. And below average, we have one less, because again, they're higher up, and we have no unsatisfactory schools this year based off of the new report cards. That unsatisfactory has been there for a while, and I'm glad to see that that has gone away. I did put an asterisk, because I think everybody needs to know that Dawington Middle School and Spalding Middle School were one point away, and Bay Road was two points away from excellent. So we almost had seven excellent schools. And when I say one point away, I'm talking about out of, you know, almost 60 points. So one point out of 55 points, and one point out of 61 points, we were off from being excellent in seven of our buildings. Brockington Elementary and North Hartsfield were one point away, and St. John's was two points away from the good category. So we, again, we were literally a point away from having seven excellent and seven good in the district, which would have been extraordinary. But I think we have to expect extraordinary now that we're this close, and I think this all tells us that we can do this. And if we're this close to it, what's it going to take to push over the edge for next year? But again, significant increases in report card ratings. Again, our excellent schools, Carolina Elementary, Lamar Spalding Elementary, Lamar High, and Mayo High. So congrats to those folks with the excellent report cards. Yeah. And our good schools, Bay Road Elementary, Dawington Middle, Hartsfield Middle, and Spalding Middle. Again, congratulations to all four of those, they deserve a round. All right, student achievement on SC Ready and Pass, 13 out of 13, all of our schools in SC Ready increased their ELA mean scores over the prior year. Nine out of the 13 schools improved their ranking across the state. The district improved from 57th to 53rd. In math, 12 out of our 13 schools increased their math scores. 11 out of 13 schools improved their rankings, our district improved from 47th to 43rd. And then in science, 11 out of 13 schools increased their science scores, 11 out of 13 schools improved their actual ranking in comparison to their peers, and our district went from 48th to 36th. So again, significant increases with a lot of our buildings. And again, principals, teachers, staff, I mean, it's all about what you all did in your buildings. Just a few highlights from student achievement data. Students who are college or career-ready, this is probably one of the most biggest indicators for me at this point in time, because now we're talking about are kids prepared when they graduate high school? And so, at the state, last year, they were at 65.8. The state went down in students who are college or career-ready. The district actually went up significantly, and we're a good bit above the state when it comes to students who are college and career-ready. So we're actually one of the higher in the state at this point in time for college and career students. And so, that is a big deal. I mean, that means that kids are graduating with the ability to either seek work or go into college. Again, we have a high percentage of our kids that are college-ready, right? So, you know, our college-ready kids are, that's a smaller population, but we are increasing more and more our work-ready, our workforce-ready students. SAT scores, state average went down from last year, district went up from last year and significantly above the state average at 1072 versus 1020. And then this is the one that is growth about, did you, the potential that your students had to grow, did you maximize that potential for your students, okay? So student progress, which is growth points earned, and as our principals know, this is a big part of their report card. This is, like, if you get these points, you do well on the report card. The state's at 51% for all students, we're at 64.2%, which means we significantly grew our students more than other districts with the same types of students grew their students, right? So we actually grew significantly in comparison to other students around the state like ours. And then the lowest 20%, again, every district has their lowest 20%, we grew our lowest 20% higher than what the state average is and how they grew their students. So the growth piece is huge, because that's how you finally get to achievement, right? Growth turns into achievement. So if you really want to start working and moving those achievement levels up and percentages up, it's got to start with growth, because if you don't grow them, you can't get them to point B after that. Math growth, second grade, again, these students are going to be tested this year in third grade on SC Ready. In 2022, ELA was 26.7%, in 2023, it was 44.9%. So significant increase in our math growth for second graders in the ELA. And then in math, which is the trend in our district, we are doing significantly better in math than in reading and in ELA, and it's been a trend for, you know, ever since I've been here and even before then. But our math scores are significantly higher than a lot of folks around us. And again, the trend continues with the math meets and exceeds for the second graders. So that should translate to third graders taking SC Ready, and hopefully benefits the scores for our schools with that. All right, other highlights for the district. We were chosen as the One Ed Tech Collaborative District of the Year Award, and so that was a kudos to technology and instructional technology, that was our instructional technology folks primarily, and our technology folks. New implementations from Performance Matters, remember, we moved away from our former, that we used to have Mastery Connect, and now we have Performance Matters for all of our formative assessments. Pick My Kid Card Dismissal and TARDI software, simple discipline software we're working through. We've had to increase our internet pipeline, because we have so much that's connected now, and so we've almost doubled the pipeline, and we could still use more. First esports team, we had a chance to start an esports team in a season this past year, and so that's been received very well. We have a new website that all of you all had a chance to see by now, plus a communication platform. Our Dawington County School District Hall of Fame was initiated, and we have our inaugural class of honorees this year that we will have a discussion about shortly. Teacher morale project, which is a committee of teachers across the district, and all schools are represented, on how can we make Dawington County the best place for you to want to teach and stay? Employee holiday and retention sign-on bonuses, thank you, Board, for allowing all of our employees to have holiday bonuses and retention bonuses and/or sign-on bonuses this past year, thank you for approving that. Salary increases for all of our employees, our starting teacher pay is $45,000, which is a significant amount in comparison to people around us. Again, thank you, Board. We restarted the Dawington County School District Career Fair hiring event, some of y'all had a chance to see that and what it was like, and the energy in that room, and wound up with over 40 hires from that, several hundred attendees. We implemented International Teacher Council, try to connect our teachers that aren't from here on how to help each other and learn more about how to take care of each other. We've got a district cohort of 60 teachers that are working towards national board certification right now, that we're working with through CERA, and we also implemented the sick leave bank for all of our full-time employees. New STEM credential master's degree programs through Clemson University that we started with our middle schools. Key to Career Program, we had over 100 student interns placed this past year. We started the new eighth-grade Ascend program with local businesses serving 75 students per semester. We want to serve a whole lot more, we're working on ways this fall on how we can do that. Our new Florence Dawington Tech Dawington County School District math courses that are for work-based pathway students, instead of the traditional, you got to take Algebra I, you got to take geometry, you got to take Algebra II, you got to take proven stats. Kids that want to go into the workforce, they don't need to have that pathway, there's other options. And so, we've been able to work with Florence Dawington Tech, and that came directly out of our business community meetings that we've had, as well as the Ascend program. Healthy SC initiative with MUSC, Spalding Middle was our first winner with $5,000 that they got to put towards healthy initiatives. They built boxes for growing vegetables and everything, and their kids in the school was completely involved, but lots of the schools, y'all have done that as well. And then we got a new five-year district strategic plan that we just initiated, that we're just starting on. So it was a good year, and it's a year of hope and a year of encouragement of what this year can be, because that's what that information tells me from last year is. Number one, the goals that we had, they don't go away, they just become incorporated in what we're doing now as we move forward, but we have new focus. But most importantly, all of the academic success that our schools have had this year should be encouragement to everybody in this room that we can do it. We know what our kids can do now, we know what our teachers can do, our teachers know what they can do. It should be confirmation that not only are we headed in the right direction, but we can do extraordinary things in this school district, and that's what we need to strive for, not just to be average or good, but to be excellent and truthfully be extraordinary. And so, that should be what we're all striving for. So that is the presentation for the state of the district.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Newman?
Thank you, Dr. Newman. And that moves us on to our policy items. We've got one CAA organizational chart, that is the second reading, the rest of these are all the first reading. Some of them are just changes, because we had to change the title of the person that was there. None of the body of the policy has changed. We do have the graduation requirement that where our financial literacy has to be added, and then we discussed the tobacco-free workspace at our work session. So we need, I guess, a motion to, first, let's do the second reading, and then we'll take the others for first reading. Can I get a motion for a second reading for the organizational chart?
I move that we accept the, so a second reading for all the organizational charts.
CAA, do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? And then we have the first reading, everything else.
Yeah, we move the read, first reading, B, what is it, B, BAC through...
It was a name.
Yeah, move M.
So, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a, all in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed?
Madam Chair, looking at your section I, there's nothing on that one, that's just...
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so that'll be sections...
We need to approve that.
B through L?
B through A, and then J through... Everyone clear on that? That's what it went? Okay. All right, and that moves us on to our 2023 Dawington County School District Hall of Fame. And after the nomination, verification selections were completed, the district has a final roster of five individuals for the inaugural class of the Dawington County School District Hall of Fame. Administration recommended qualification, education approved, final roster for this 2023 Hall of Fame. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to re-accept the recommendation for the Hall of Fame first inaugural induction.
Before we go, can you explain that? Those names have been shared with us, but we're not sharing a proper lead.
Right, we'll get that to the end discussion. Can we get a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, now, we have a discussion?
That's what I meant to do, that's why, this is what I meant to say, that. I just wanted you to explain that, so they're not understanding.
Right now, the committee has identified those five individuals, we are approving the administration's recommendation to accept those, and then... And then we are planning to have a banquet after the first of the year. And we will be reaching out to those individuals so that we can include them. We just don't want this to be an announcement right now because we're a step away from when we will be recognizing them. But that will be, we're coming, Dr. Newman, we're reaching out to them soon and their family so that we can coordinate a date after the first of the year.
Any more discussion or questions?
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
No, we made a motion. Let's get a vote. Let's have a vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And we'll be looking forward to that new feature. Dr. Newman, do you have anything you want to add for superintendent's update?
Just a couple of small things. First, I think you all have received information about the countywide joint dinner that is on October 30th. We have to have our registrations in by October 12th. Again, this is a time where we can talk with all of our entities about top-of-mind topics, one of which I think should be what we talked about last year and how we can get some more participation in that. But I wanted to mention that. Also, Captain Kim Nelson was chosen as the State Advocate of the Year. I want to publicly acknowledge that for her. Captain Nelson is with us. That's an incredible honor and well-deserved, and we are glad to have you with us. More importantly, we're glad to have your gun and badge with us. So I always like our gun and badges. But that's a great honor. And for y'all to know, Captain Nelson is involved in so many different programs around the county where she volunteers her time. It just seems like nonstop. But glad to see one of our own be recognized for that. Also, another recognition, the South Carolina High School League recognized the Lamar Chain Crew at the football games, the people that do the chains. The South Carolina High School League actually recognized them. Their picture has been put out all across the state. So kudos to the Lamar High School Chain Crew. They don't get enough pats on the back. My guess is people are always screaming at them, so we should applaud them, all right? Of course, the information for the delegate selection for the delegate conference that we have coming up, I think we've already taken care of that, Chair Hassler. So I had that on my list. And then the last one, so we have Election Day coming up on the 7th of November. And we're required to be off for the general elections, which is the president elections that happen. And so in that calendar next year, we are off. We're not off this year from school on Election Day. And of course, we have the election polls and the election leaders from across the county that are expecting to use our schools, a lot of our schools, for Election Day. So I would like to move us from, I don't want to be off that day. I'd like to do an e-learning day so we don't lose the day and have to make it up. And so we're allowed to do an e-learning day for Election Day this year. We can't do it next year. We're not allowed to do it in a general election, but we can actually do it in a regular Election Day. So I know, I think I've talked to a couple of principals and said, hey, we're going to potentially have a bunch of people roaming your campus. And they're like, whoa, wait a minute, I thought we're off that day and we're not. So we need to be out of our buildings because I am not comfortable having voter precincts in our buildings with kids onsite. And so I think we can accomplish this by doing an e-learning day, and that's going to be my recommendation versus trying to add a makeup day in the calendar.
I know, hey, teachers hate me when I say this at press conferences, but I just, the flip side of that is, yeah, it is another day, it isn't. I don't say disruptive, but again, you got to gear up for e-learning, they got to change their work. You've got parents with kids, you've got, I mean, fortunately with this semi-year-round thing we're moving towards, they're gradually getting to it and I think they're starting to like and appreciate, but it's still an adjustment. And I know one of the bigger areas that does daycare are having a really good person that will really appreciate of it. But again, to have that services phenomenal, otherwise, I don't know what these parents would do. But again, they're slowly getting there. But when we pop an e-learning here and there, that's a struggle for families, right? Again, I just ask us to consider that. I know, I don't want to cause any frustration with our people. I assume you're in conversation with your principals and your teachers about what they see and think and...
Yeah, and luckily, it's a month out, so we've got at least a month to kind of plan for this. But, you know, I was surprised at how many of the buildings, you know, we kind of hope to get out of the voting business, I think. I mean, ideally, I think, but again, traditionally in communities like ours, they're used to using schools.
How many schools are used? Because I didn't think we were using that many.
Yeah, it's at least seven or eight across the district.
Well, I think, well, first of all, as you said, it's been, it's kind of been standard over the years for U.S.A. schools. I think the other thing is, is the safety issue more than anything else for me. And to have people coming off of the streets, going into our schools to vote, I think we are asking something that we may regret. I think we would do better to let them use the schools and have them do it every day.
You know, hopefully, we know we're out next year, so this gives us the next two years to have some conversations at the county level and see if we might be able to work out a Plan B.
That's really disruptive, in my opinion. I mean, I can say it, July election days...
But aside to it, if you have, if they have schools and you're letting teachers, I mean, you're letting people come into your campus, it's going to be disruptive.
I'm more in favor of saying, let's find a different poll, let's find a different place to have your voting.
Yeah.
At our school, that's why I'm saying it's disruptive. I'm not saying it's a security issue to some degree, but I just, it needs to be in other places.
Yeah, I think it gives us some time to work on that now, since we know next year we're going to be off anyways, and so we can have these conversations out of the...
There's so much early voting right now, there's so much paper voting. It's just unbelievable, other alternatives to coming in. I just wonder how much traffic, especially in an off year, that's really going to disrupt the entire school district.
And this might be a good time to do this because I understand that the director of the voter registration is retiring possibly, so this might be a good time to have that conversation when you're getting new personnel on.
I'm just going to say, I don't think it gives us a lot, it's not a lot of foresight on our part. Schools have, our schools have been used in that we scheduled this as a regular workday with our students in person, and now all of a sudden we switched to something. And I agree, I mean, this puts a burden on families. I understand the safety aspect of it, and I know which way this is going to end up. But I just want to say, I'm not in favor of it from a lack of planning on our part. And...
You've got employers and families that struggle with, I mean, employers are really struggling with this. It's like, we got those fall break, it's like, well, why don't we just all take off this week? It was tough staffing for a lot of businesses. But again, that part, I think, advanced, here it is, schedule in advance, but here's something that wasn't, that is, again, we need some consistency. And I would love to carry the conversation with the county about moving our polls as soon as possible. There are plenty of places out there. Churches have always been used, and there are churches everywhere, great locations, better, easier, don't have the conflict, they're not disrupting in the middle of the week, they're not having service, et cetera. Anyway.
Yeah, I agree. All right, and that's everything that I have for superintendent's update.
All right, that moves us on to board member input. Ms. Gore, you want to lead us off again?
Yes, sure.
I just want to say kudos to all the principals, the teachers, for the great job that you've done and administrative staff, Dr. Newman, thank you all. Thank you all for, for the growth that this school district has. And I really see great things in the future because when we meet the children's needs, we can see that their expectations will grow. And I appreciate all what you do every day. I appreciate the great things that you're doing at your schools. And I feel that we're going to continue to grow and do great things in the Darlington County School District. I'm just glad that I'm a part of it at this time. And I was just thinking about what really was my purpose of being here as a school board member. And I was really looking at myself. And so one of the main things that I thought about as being a school board member was the passion that I have for children. Because in my lifetime, I've always had some type of occupation that had been connected to children, you know, counselor, behavior interventionalist, and all of these things. And through all the obstacles that we, y'all had to go through, and y'all have accomplished a measure of greatness in this city. And I know that once the news get out and the community is able to see what you're doing, I feel that the community will get on board with us and get more involved and more active in the school district in helping our children. Because we can't do this by ourselves. Because when I go visit parents, I would tell them, if you just give us the basics, behavior, attitude, support, encouragement of your child, we can empower that child to be whatever he wants to be in life. And he can grow in this, he or she can be a great model citizen. So right now, I'm just overwhelmed, I'm happy, and I appreciate y'all hard work this year. I appreciate y'all hard work. Anything I can do to support, encourage, empower, I'm willing to do. This is my passion for children, and I appreciate the hard work you all put forth every day. I really do. And I appreciate you, Dr. Newman, as a leader, and your leadership responsibility that you took, and you did a great job. You did a great job. Many may have doubted you, but I didn't. I never doubted, I never doubted you from the start. I knew it could be done. And I know that there, and I know that it's greater that's coming. So you all owe yourselves a hand clap because you all did a wonderful job, and I appreciate all of you all. And I pray for you all every day.
I don't think I'm going to talk that long tonight.
All she says is all her conversation right at the end. I got you all.
I've already mentioned to you, Dr. Newman, and Ms. Gobin, I have just a little thought going through my head, you know, while I worked through the day, you know, just driving. I'd like to get the board's input and all, possibly having you Masonic cornerstone placed at the new school, since we are currently within, you're planning and building, you have everything. Possibly doing that, you, I was out at St. John's, you, today, and there is a cornerstone at St. John's dated 1915, I believe, right there at the corner of building A. I think it'll be one way that we could possibly bring the Dawson and Society here groups together, you, to show that, hey, you know, we're coming together for our kids. And I'm also thinking, I know we discussed it on the phone, once the new school is being done, possibly having a brick or a block from St. John's and from Rosenwald, you know, implanted into the new building, you know, signifying the unity of the two.
I think there's going to be a move in forward with those plans. I mean, that's something I can pull up at the work session and have a further discussion with that. Anything else?
Maybe that's it. I told you, I was going to be kind of...
He said you were going to be quick. Leanne? Jane?
Again, I go to what you said about, obviously, one of the departments was frustrated with our progress and academic progress and growth. So very pleased with what we're seeing, not so much in our ranking, of course, I mean, obviously, that's still low, but our progress, our growth. And again, I've harped and hardened, Juan's the same, it's like, oh, whatever, I'm just glad to see that across the board. That was very encouraging. I guess I'd really love some way to try to promote this. We've always talked about this, back when we were really fifth in the state and all these kind of things, we were everywhere with it. It was in our schools and so on, whatever. I don't think we're quite, I don't know what those schools have done, what their growth is. You don't want to go put yours out there and someone else swamps you, I don't mean that. But we need to get that, we need to get it to the parents, we need to get it to the schools, and obviously, we will. But again, you jump on that bandwagon, it feeds on itself. You got to have something positive. You can't keep negative, all you see is negative. I think someone made a comment about the media, I think, in a meeting or whatever, not here as much because it's not as much controversy. No, there's not. We work well, I think we do well as a board. It's good not to have that. But now we'd like to have the media in a positive way. I don't know that we'll get to see that like we do in a negative way, but we need to get on, they need to get on board with this, to promote it. Also, I'm glad to hear that conversation in the past about, while in the past, it's always been this way, it just didn't seem that way. Where administrative was here to support our schools and our principals and the teachers. I like the public announcement kind of thing to us, when I had that meeting the other day a few weeks ago, that administration is here, their goal is to support our principals. I think that's positive. I think that I'll continue to add the success, the growth that we're doing, let them do what they need to do, how they want to do it, and just provide them with what they need more than anything. Just question ballpark, probably don't know this, first year, second year, third year teachers, number of teachers in the district? Any idea how many that is?
Number of first, second, and third year?
Yeah, just the new teachers. Not just with us, just their first, second, third year.
Probably a little less than third, but I could ditch an actual number.
I'd love to see that number.
Is somebody in the report card, like the, there's like a designation?
No, we can, so basically, three years or less experience in the teaching profession? Is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, totally. Not without, not just, I mean, in teaching, no matter.
So three years or less? Okay, with us, okay, yeah, we get that.
And I guess where I'm going with that is, you know, years ago, we used to do the teacher forum, we got together with them, we, there were several things we used to do where we'd ask questions, or they would have questions and they would ask, and we'd go around and we'd talk about it. We have some general dialogue at our tables, really good feedback. I don't know what the district does for those one through three, but those are your impression, impressionistic years. I'd love to do the same at some point, the board get with them, just, I don't know, I don't want too much administration around some, but just to hear what do they think? This doesn't mean anything against administration, but again, they're more apt to speak, talk, conversation, pros, cons, goods, bad, to learn, you know, what were you taught in school? What were you expecting to come into this teaching? What has met your expectations? What didn't meet your expectations? And why? And then to kind of help them to continue to grow, if that makes sense. I think that'd be an interesting conversation, interesting meeting, dinner, function, something like that at some point. If it's not too many, again, the smaller the group, the better.
We got four or less, we can do that.
Oh, yes, yes. So, yes.
But we can still do that.
Again, ways we can talk about that, but it's good to have, again, people around where they feel comfortable talking. So we can learn, we, meaning administration, board, et cetera, what did they expect? What can we do better? How can we help them get over certain things? What do they find hard and difficult? In an environment where they're open to speak, it might be two, maybe we send off and y'all go to dinner here, there, a couple of board members and our staff go off, if that makes sense. Love to have a staff member, administrative staff, with a couple of board members, and they can pick and choose what they want. Maybe there's 10 members, 15 at a time with a group, maybe it's only five, I don't know, maybe you have to break that up.
It'd be around 100 teachers, probably.
Yeah, I mean, some way to, again, you're right, I keep forgetting about them. And I don't mind having a meeting, but you lose productivity when you have that. I want them to where they're comfortable in a relaxed environment, so to speak. Anyway, it'd be interesting.
On that same note, I mean, we had talked at the retreat about other ways to engage, you know, out in the community as a board, so I'd love to continue that conversation sometime. Let's see, I found a few notes. Ms. Nelson? There you are. Congratulations again. Always, I mean, I've been, you know, I've had kids in the district for 13 years, and I'm always impressed by, and now that I'm on the board and I get to get time, more time with people, I'm just so impressed. that I'm on the board, and I get to get time, more time with people, I'm just so impressed by the passion of so many people in our district, and you're an example of that. So, thank you. Um, of course, congratulations on school report cards. I can't wait to look at those tomorrow, get a little more information. I'm glad to hear good news. That's, um, that's exciting. Um, I wanted to say, sort of, along, some of the same lines you were saying, I had jotted down, that I noticed, Audrey, I noticed that there's a lot more positive news, and just, I've been seeing more headlines that say Darlington County schools lately, and nine out of 10 of them are positive things. So, thank you for efforts for getting that information out there. I can tell you're, you're working at, at trying to get that out there. And also, um, as a parent in the district, I'm seeing those communicate, the new communication tool. Um, you know, I'm starting to see the websites really looking fresh, and the newsletters are, are great, and I hope it's easy for you guys to use, so that we can really keep that momentum going. And as a board member, I've been like, snooping on your Facebook pages, and then I can go look at your newsletter. You know, your newsletter's now there. That's very easy. Like, I can pop on there and see what's going on. I'm hoping to make it to some of your fall festivals. So, I went out, I went out recently looking for fall festival times, so I could try to come out and see you. And that was super easy through that process. So, I'm, I'm seeing some positive change on the communication tools and everything. So, thank you. And, um, I just hope everybody had a good fall break. I know I, I did last week. I got to spend some time with my daughter, and have some, some family time, and, um, enjoyed, I really enjoy this calendar. I wish we'd done it when my kids were little. I know that it creates some, some difficulties, especially with smaller kids, and my kids are older now, but I really enjoy this calendar. And I really had a nice week last week, and I hope you guys did as well. So, um, I think that's all.
Mr. Jeffords?
Pretty much, yeah, I know what everyone's said. Uh, congratulations to our school. We appreciate the job they've done. Captain Nelson, congratulations to you. Um, how are we doing on our vacancies now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Come down a few, right?
A little bit, yes, sir.
Okay, right. That's it. I appreciate everyone.
Mr. Gobin?
Well, I have a couple of things. One, I also want to congratulate our principals, teachers, and that whole village that creates to have that, to make that child, because it took all of them to make us, to get us to where we are academically. And I would say, keep on, keep it on. The second thing I wanted to mention is that on November the 15th, uh, our fraternity during that week is having a keeper week. And, uh, one of our objectives this year is that we have decided to, um, go with one of the schools in the district to do some mentoring and, and some help. And so, the guys picked Hartsfield Middle School, because that seems to be the area, the middle school seems to be that transition period. And I've talked with Dr. James, and we were working on the logistics of it. I think, right now, she's planning for us to come over there only, that Wayne stuff thing. Um, the grift for parents that they had paid was well-attended. I, I, our grandparents, I was able to attend. And, um, I think it was, it was real, it was, it was interesting. Uh, but I do know from personal experiences, that if you want to get parents, all you got to do is invite them, just have something mature and involved, and they gonna show up. That's the, I think that's the real disadvantage of high school. They don't, other than athletics, uh, band competition or something, they lose contact, and it kind of goes away once the kids get out of elementary school. But as a whole, parents will follow, grandparents will follow those children. Um, on the last meeting, we had work session, I was out attending a conference in Washington, uh, an advocacy legislative conference with congressmen. And this is probably my second or third time doing that, but it's the first time that I actually had an opportunity to meet with our congressman who represents this area. And Congressman Fry did make an effort, and he did come and meet with us. Uh, we divided in South Carolina, the seven congressional districts, and depending upon where you lived and represented, was a group that you were assigned to. And so, I think that was, we had some conversation. I will tell you, Dr. Newman, that I asked, I asked him to consider coming to visit our schools, and, uh, he said he would. I think, if the buckets are gonna stop at, start at the top, then I think they need to be aware of what's going on before they make decisions. So, that's why I did it. Uh, the last thing I'm gonna mention is, I mentioned this to Dr. Newman several, several weeks ago, and, uh, I think this is probably the first time that you all have been told this, uh, he was talking about the CERO Board and retention and recruitment. I've been asked to serve on their board of directors, because of the position that I hold in the Sacramento School Board Association as board of directors. So, I think they have three meet, four meetings a year, and, um, I think two of them, maybe three, are face-to-face, and one is virtual. So, I will be attending those. So, if I can help you, let me know. That's it.
All righty. Um, I don't have anything to add. Uh, we'll move on to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve personal office?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve, uh, personnel actions.
Second. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
All opposed? Uh, I don't think that we need, uh, I think we finished everything up at this executive session that began the meeting, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
May I make, um, make a motion with, or?
All in favor? Y'all have a great rest of your week.